I would like to bring the May 17th, 2023 meeting of the Intermountain Boards Movement to order. We have a roll call. Ms. Conville.
Thank you, Ms. Ushman. Ms. Wilkens?
Here.
Mr. Willis?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Goldsboro, Ms. Joseph, Ms. Vadian, Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Shabam?
Here.
Mr. Brooks.
Mr. Evans, can we have the vocation and the pledge, please?
Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer, us all schools, colleges, and especially the university community, and grant to this board in the third deliberations that feeding the spirit of wisdom through the knowledge. What is undertaken will be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this we ask with your name. Amen.
All right, at this time, we are going to hear from our student representatives, Miss Reeser, and our last report, Ms. Ascom.
Good evening. At the Intermountain Academy, we had a fun-filled month with our final trips to John High, the zoo, and Prospect Park Library. We also had a visit from the Barn Hill Preserve. Students seemed to enjoy the assembly and taking pictures with the various animals. Our annual career day took place on May 9th. We are looking forward to field day and day fair on the 19th. As we approach the end of the month, our Intermountain students will visit the community schools during their holiday.
At Barn Hill and School, the students returned from spring break and were eager to continue challenging themselves to complete their remotes for the upcoming visit of the Philly Fanatic at the end of the month. On Friday, April 14th, our home in school hosted Designer Bag and Melon Bunch. It was a great time for the community to get together and have some fun while waiting for Lily Green bags and prizes. Thank you to the wonderful board for making this happen. The students in grades third through eighth put their best efforts forward and did everything they could to finish preparing for the Kansas City's. We are so proud of how hard they pushed this school here and how they applied all of their strategies during testing. The time finally arrived as the Philly Fanatic came to visit us at the Goldenberg. He acted out a story, danced with many of us, and even hit a few balls into the audience. It was a great time had by all and one we hope to repeat. We close out the month honoring our student of the month recipients for demonstrating the virtue of acceptance. We are looking forward to the many fun and meaningful events in the near future.
At Norwood, on Friday, April 14th, our middle school students had a spring fling at Norwood. The students looked fabulous and had a great time. This was a fundraiser for our eighth grade class. On Thursday, April 20th, Mrs. Berger's class celebrated East Parks Office High Five Day. The students were recognized for their hard work and dedication for mastering their reading and math skills and earning high fives. On Monday, April 24th, we held two pep rallies for the PSSAs, one for our elementary students and one for those who are students. Everyone really enjoyed the pep rallies, and it was a great start for the PSSA testing period. April 24th through May 5th, we held our ELA, Math, and Science PSSAs. The students were all ready and willing to take the test these two weeks. Each afternoon, we held a raffle for the students to wear gift cards, and after the PSSAs were over, we had a grand raffle, and four of our students won large prizes. On Thursday, April 27th, Tracy Tichner was recognized as a Teacher of the Year by the Franklin Mint Federal Credit Union Foundation. She was awarded a check for $1,000 for her classroom and one for our school. The week of May 15th, we held our annual book year. The items were buy and get one, and our students always love to get a good book for some reading. Our spring concert for grades four and five, Morrison and Damm, were held on Thursday, May 10th. The students were wonderful. At the spring concert, we also held our art show. The students always enjoy sharing their work with their family and friends. Our fifth grade team went to the Colonial Plantation on Monday, May 5th, and everyone had a great time.
At Prospect Park School, April was a busy month. During the month of April, we celebrated the abilities of our autistic support students. We started the month by having several dress day days and provided our teachers with information to share with our students about our no diversion units. A huge shout-out to Jackson Aldridge, who was walking with his band at the Eagles Autism Walk during the month of May to celebrate... To celebrate the acceptance of students with autism, Mrs. Boswell, our building principal, will also be completing the Eagles Autism Run in support of the three autistic support classrooms at Prospect Park School. Student staff and even the Prospect Park Police came out to support our home in school event and duct taped the principal, Mrs. Boswell. She was duct taped against the gym wall as the students enjoyed Kona Heights. Mrs. McGrath and the No Place for Aid Student Committee held our annual drive for Providence Animal Center. Our students and staff did a great job collecting things we dropped off. Lastly, PSSAs got underway. Students and staff did a great job trying their best. We look forward to what may have in store for us here at Prospect Park School.
At Tinico, we held its third book awards assembly to recognize students who show respect, responsibility, honesty, and book pride. Students are nominated by our teachers. Special area teachers also nominate classrooms who display these behaviors to the teachers. And in gym, music, library, art, and STEM. This year, along with the awards, Tinico held a pep rally to help students get ready for the PSSAs. Our PSSAs went smoothly thanks to our great students and wonderful staff. Every year, Tinico's school holds their Hoops for Heart slash Jopathon event. This is a big event, so the middle school students participated on April 20th, and elementary school students participated on April 21st. The students enjoy the fresh air while getting some great exercise. A big thank you to our PE department, Mr. Wood and Mr. Rainbow, for a great event. Every Friday afternoon, a group of elementary students enjoy popsicle treating. These students are picked from book notes they earned from staff members for showed respect, responsibility, honesty, and pride. At the end of the month, notes are pulled for a bigger prize, like lunch from the beginning.
For Intermountain High School, two of our very unrepresented individuals at the 2023 Making a Difference Awards. This annual awards event is sponsored by Delaware County's Rights Education Task Force and recognizes students who have persevered through challenges to be successful in an inclusive setting, students who have showcased support and friendship to those with all abilities, and professionals who do an exceptional job in making sure all students with all abilities are included and supported in the classroom. Jasmine Ward-Fernandez was nominated by Katie Garvin for her involvement in the Box Plays program and for always showing support to all students. Andrew Hummer was recognized for continuous support of all students and for showcasing students with all abilities on the microscope. In addition to the Jimmy Show, our special education teams are always represented daily on the microscope, whether it is behind the scenes or at the news desk. Junior Camp was held on April 21st at the Oaks Ballroom. The night was fantastic, and all the guests looked exceptional. A big thank you to the class sponsors, Mr. Webb and Mr. O'Dea, for a great night for the class of 2023. And for Teacher Appreciation Week, thank you, Mrs. Riley, Mr. Litz, and Ms. Ford, for bringing a great week for our teachers. Ms. Ward gave the theme this year, hitting it out of the park every day. On Monday, teachers were all given char fees and chocolate at Pretzel Road. Tuesday, they were given Cracker Jacks. On Wednesday, administration, Mr. Litz, Ms. Ford, Dr. Daniels, and Ms. Fisher-Brown served breakfast and student council meat ice cream after school. On Thursday, candy breads and a delicious lard from Homeless School, a big thing leading the taste of sunset. On Friday, Wawa breakfast and half-dollars ranch chips were served after school, which again, for all we can do. Boxathon was held here at the high school on April 14th, raising over $150,000. Donations are still being taken, and for everyone who helped with this event. On April 14th, student council members have the opportunity to go to Garden Valley, Edumaze, and Chara Students' Day. It was a great chance for our students to go and see how other schools work and make a impact with some great ideas. For the Red Cross Jive, thanks to Mr. Lavre for setting it up and having the Red Cross come to our school for students and staff to donate to this great cause. And that's for the board.
Thank you. All right, next up is why many of you are here tonight. We are going to recognize a bunch of our outstanding students here at Intermountain High School. So at this time, I'm going to ask the board to go down and have a seat, and we are going to recognize our students.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here this evening. As I said when we were recognizing our top 5%, this is probably the best board meeting that we have all year because we get to recognize all of the students, especially our graduating class, for the amazing work that they have contributed to their educational career. So we're all very proud of you, and you who are being recognized here this evening, we're very proud of you, and we wish you the best, especially to our seniors. So since we do have a lot of awards, we're going to get started. The first award is the Class of 2023 Senior Board Representative. Mr. Shabam.
So we would like to congratulate Farhan Asghar for this, being the recipient of this award. The board, for the last year, two years, I've gotten to know her. She's an exceptional young lady. As a former board rep myself, you know, in the future, maybe you'll be on the school board in a few years. So we are so proud of you, and we'd love to give you this plaque.
I would also like to congratulate the elected junior board representative, 2324. I'm not sure if Andrew Hoops is here this evening. Andrew, we're here. Andrew, you have a tough act of talent. So we welcome you, and we wish you the best, and let everybody get to see. We'll see you in September. Welcome. All right, next, we're going to ask Ms. Ford to come up to start the recognition for our athletes.
Good evening. Our first set of recognition awards are for the Winter Aldelco selections. So in the fall, we did the Fall Aldelcos, and in the winter, we'll do the winter now, and then in the spring, Aldelcos will recognize them in the fall. They don't come out until a little bit later. So first off, we'd like to recognize our first Team Aldelco winner this year, which is Kylie Arnott for diving, so thirteen. And for those of you who weren't out here at the last meeting, Kylie also won the state championship for diving this year at the Red Cross. Okay, our other Aldelcos, so we have Aldelco honorable mention for girls, basketball, Elena DiAngelo. For boys, basketball, Jayden DeWara. Honorable mention for wrestling, Anthony Lassio. And the following are all for swimming and diving. Merritt Daniels. Katie Corr. Aubrey Kaufman. Alexis Mariner. Logan Giordano. And Nancy McQuillan. So once again, all these athletes are recognized by the Delaware County Daily Times as Aldelco athletes for our winter sports. So once again, a nice round of applause. Pick a bad day not to wear my glasses. Okay, so next up, last year, we started, for graduation, we wanted to make sure we had a chance to honor as many kids as we could at graduation last year. So we talked as an administration, as central administration, about honoring different athletes and different students for different things that they've done in the building, and being scholars on top of that. So not only are they involved in a sport or they're involved in a music or an art program, they're also scoring above 90s cumulative average over the last four years. So to start off tonight, the first thing I want to give out are the student scholar athletes. So everybody listed here, there's about 91 or 32 of them. Every one of these scholar athletes play at least one sport, and their cumulative GPA average is a 90 or above for the four years, which is great considering the amount of time that the students put into practices, and some of these students play two or three different sports for this. So all the student athletes that I'm mentioning now will get a certificate, but they'll also get a cord to wear at graduation. So it'll be a light blue cord that they'll wear at graduation, and each one of the different sets of people recognized tonight will have a different cord at graduation, and that'll be noted in the book as well. So to start off, we have... Too fast, okay. Kimberly Nguyen. I want to read the sports that go along with it. So Kimberly Nguyen is for cross-country. Next up, we have Gabrielle Haney, who has soccer, indoor, and outdoor track. Julian Belovas, football and baseball. Next up, Farhan Asghar for volleyball. Isabella Tanzi, field hockey. Sarah Ewing, cheerleading. Michael Northrop, soccer and lacrosse. Kaitlin Betson, cross-country. Riley Burkhym, cheerleading. Allison Perillo, cheerleading. Kaylee Wagner, cheerleading. Matthew Galenall, football. Axel Nichols, he's at the Euro Bowl. He's one of our representatives at the Euro Bowl this year, so he'll be here in a little bit to pick that up. Haley Maroney, cheerleading and lacrosse. Mason McCoy is also a three-sport athlete for cross-country, swimming, and outdoor track. Another three-sport athlete, Finnegan Lehman, cross-country, indoor and outdoor track. Another three-sport athlete, Rebecca Roberts, soccer, indoor, and outdoor track. Sarah Schreiber for volleyball. Alexa McDevitt for field hockey. Dylan Smith is for track. Kennedy Balik for softball. And just mentioning, softball and baseball have their final games tomorrow, and then they'll be in the playoffs next week, so we'll be able to see them continue in the district playoffs. Victoria Smith, field hockey and lacrosse. Felicia Peskatur, field hockey and lacrosse. Gate Reefer, football. Abu Kamara, football and outdoor track. Abu is also part of our track team. We have nine members of our outdoor track team that will be participating in districts on Friday. So if they go, if they went on Friday, they'll go on Saturday, too. So we have two 4x100 relays and two high rollers going on Friday to district. So pay attention to that Go Book Sports, so you can see how everybody did on that. Next up, Grace Finley, cheerleading. Next up, Gianna Alfamitano for volleyball. Brady Newell for soccer and lacrosse. Patrick Brennan for basketball. Fiona Hennings, volleyball. Kaitlin Bowers-Smith for cheerleading. And our last but not least is Jada Taboron Butler, who's three sports, cross-country, indoor, and outdoor track. So once again, congratulations to all of these athletes for all their accomplishments. Okay, next up is non-sports related. This is a presentation for, once again, we want to recognize scholars of our seniors who, you know, they might not participate on the sports field, but they participate in other activities that are taking up huge amounts of their time, and it's their passion, what they want to maybe pursue later in life, but it's their passion right now, and that's what they've been working on. So we're going to recognize this year our art and music scholars. These students will receive, I believe it's a maroon color cord at graduation, so you'll be able to see them. So at this time, I'm going to call up Georgina Curtin for choir and show. Amani Daniel for choir. Aiden Doherty, choir, music, and show. Grace Finley for choir. Gabrielle Haney for choir and show. Alexa McDevitt, choir and show. Sarah Schreiber, choir and show. Abigail Doherty, music and show. Olivia Lee, music and show. Mona Lee Han, music. Finnegan Lehman, music. Kaylee Wagner, show. Alexis Chow, show. Edwin Torres, show. Robert Strange, show. Victoria Smith, art. Patrick Brennan, art. Alexis Chow, art. Abigail Palmer, art. Rebecca Roberts, art. And Vincent Lilly, art. And we know this one, they did our most sports and music and art, and we appreciate everything they've done. We've had very exciting shows and musicals over the last couple of years, and the artwork you see outside in the hallway, some of them, most of them are absolutely beautiful. So please take some time, when the board meeting is over, to take some time to look at the art, and hopefully you had a chance to see our musicals and come to our course. Next up, I'm going to introduce Mr. Andy Costanzo to do some of our leadership awards. I'm sorry, welcome around the applause.
Great to see so many people here tonight, plenty of former students. In fact, of the students I want to introduce, a number of them I taught either mother, their father, or both, so it's nice to see and continue into the next generation. That is great. Rose McHale and I were delighted to have been student council advisors, again, with a group of tremendous leaders, as well as committee chairman representatives. We have about 79 students involved in student council this year, some more than others, as you would expect, but that's a great number for us to have. So we're going to recognize our senior officers. We have a few younger ones, but the seniors tonight, and hopefully they are here. I've seen them all, I've been seeing Jules. Our student council president, who did a terrific job this year running meetings and doing all the other typical presidential things, hopefully she's here. Jules, there she is, come on down. I don't think any doubt, whoever here, Jules. Jules just came back from the lacrosse game, where I understand she did very well in this competition. Jules will be continuing her education at West Chester University. Vice President of Student Council this year is an underclassman, so we will not be recognizing her tonight, but I will mention her anyway. Janet Chan is not here because she's not a senior, but did a terrific job, considering she's only a sophomore, and I'm sure we have a lot, we'll see a lot more from her in the years to come. Secretary, who kept us on track with agendas and all those things, we have Ms. Riley Burkhym. Both of those parents I taught, well, they're... Riley's an outstanding student, as I'm sure you saw earlier. She will be continuing her education at St. Joseph's University. Our treasurer has been up here already, is Grace Finley. Grace is going to Pennsylvania State University. I want to call Farhan Asghar again, because she was already recognized, but she was our senior board representative, and has served for two years, as you heard. Farhan Asghar is going to Drexel University in the medical field, either as a PA or a medical doctor, I'll show you two. Well, and last but certainly not least, Gabrielle Haney. And Gabrielle's particularly significant for us because she was on the state student council board, represented all of southeastern Pennsylvania for the last two years. In fact, her term continues until August, the end of July, when she has one more dreaded state board meeting to attend. But terrific, I mean, that's a big deal. Not that many kids on the board. She has been our latest representative since 2013, when Sarah Ebner was on the board. when Sarah Ebner was on the board. So these are our senior student council officers, please give them a round of applause. Leadership court at graduation. Thank you, girls.
How many years, how many years for pictures? Just checking. Thank you very much. Next up is Lana.
Hi, my name is Ms. Cap. I had the honor with Mr. Ryan this year to be the class advisor of the class of 2023. It was absolute pleasure, and see, the class is amazing, and we look forward to celebrate with them next Thursday for their senior prom, which is on the waterfall in Claymont, Delaware. So we just want to honor our four officers this past year, they worked really hard to do homecoming, prom, everything, help fundraise to have our tickets be as cheap as they are this year, a shout out to them. So first, I'd like to recognize our president, Kimberly Nguyen. Our vice president, Joyce Patton. Our secretary, Kaylee Wagner. And last but not least, our treasurer, Olivia Lee.
Next up, we have, we recognized last year, we want to recognize again this year, any students that we know that are military bound next year, who have signed and are going to, into the military. So at this time, I'd like to call down Morgan May. Morgan has signed with the Army National Guard, so she will be wearing a red, white and blue horn at graduation, and she will also be carrying the American flag to lead in the graduates. Okay, Mrs. Sad sad, is Mrs. Sad sad here? So I'm going to be Lisa Sad sad now, too. So over the course of a couple of weeks, we had a poetry contest run by the Home and School Association, and I believe there was about sixty students that wrote different poems. The English department went through the poems and graded them, because I'm not a good poetry person, so they came up with first, second and third place. So it's my honor to recognize those three students. First place, Kira McCarron, technically. They have a certificate and a monetary award. Second place, Abigail Chappell, ninth grade. And third place was Paige Salvatore, also a senior. Congratulations, ladies. Liliana Ruiz for next door, and Mr. Nick.
Good evening. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Ruiz for a special reason. This year, we took advantage of a new award being awarded in Pennsylvania. Some of the states have it, it's new, but it is sealed by literacy, a very special program, a very special award that is earned, it's earned by students, and we very much wanted to bring this to Interboro, and Mr. Ruiz was instrumental in helping our students achieve this special award, so Mr. Ruiz.
Thank you very much. I'm Luis Reese, I do Spanish, and I'm honored to say that four of our students passed the Apple test, which is the bilinguality seal of bilingualism. In Spanish, it's la prueba de biligualismo. Estoy muy orgullosa, I'm sorry, I'm going to say it also in Spanish for the parents. Estoy muy orgullosa que sus hijos pasaron la prueba de biligualismo. Es muy importante y van a tener muchas oportunidades. This opens up a lot of doors, because they're showing a proving that they're bilingual in the state of Pennsylvania. Hopefully next year, we can do the global one, which will be national, but that's something to come, but thank you so much. And I'm a pet, the four students, I'm not going to say in any particular order, but I'm just going to ask them if they can come to the front. Freddie? Freddie Toapanta? Melvin Vazquez? And Marcos Ramos?
Okay, last time I'm up here, I promise. A couple of weeks ago, our boys lacrosse team sponsored an autism awareness game, and they raised money, they raised money a couple of weeks prior to that, they were selling shirts, and then at the game, the parents helped them sell stuff at the snack bar, they were selling bracelets, they had autism pins, et cetera. And it was really the work of three of our players that put all this together, and they were able to raise over two thousand dollars, is that right, Mrs. Cook? Two thousand? Two thousand and sixty-three dollars. So we'd like to recognize those three gentlemen tonight and give them a certificate of appreciation for all their hard work. So at this time, if Michael Northrop. Rocco Verne. And Theo Demontes. And they are all seniors, so now we need some juniors to step up and do this again for next year. So we do appreciate all the hard work that these gentlemen did, and the money, I believe, goes right back into the Interboro Life Skills Program. So it's money that they raised that goes right back into our Life Skills Program, so great job, gentlemen.
My name is Brian Litsun, I have the privilege of being your principal. Congratulations to the top five percent. Can we call your name? If you please come forward. First, Crumpetel. Kimberly Nguyen. Nicole Franz. Gabrielle Haney. Julian Bulbas. Farhanas Askara. Isabella Tanzi. Sarah Yui. Michael Northrop. Caitlin Betson. Riley Burkhym. Allison Perilla. Kaylee Wender. You earned it. Just wanted to quickly say that, if you notice, a lot of these students were up again and again and again. It's not just that they're the top thirteen or so, the top five percent of class 2023, but they are building leaders, and as principal, I appreciate them so much for holding me to task and helping us make Interboro High School the school it can be. So we really appreciate them and all they've accomplished, very much, round of applause for them.
At this time, we would like to show the top five percent video that has been prepared to share, not only here this evening, but on our district website. Again, I want to congratulate our students and also the parents who are here this evening for your support for your children, to present the accomplishments that they have made during the courses here at Interboro.
My name is Caitlin Betson, and I went to the Prospect Park Elementary School. My plans for next year are to go to Drexel University and major in psychology. While at Interboro, I was involved in class congress, cross country, environment mentors, freshman mentors, and equity and diversity. My favorite memory at Interboro was the AP Gov trip to Philly. We met with a judge, he told us all about his job, and it was really cool. And then we went to Redding Terminal, and I ate some really good crepes. I have a lot of people to thank for where I am and where I'm heading. My parents have always been very supportive of me. They always rooted me on, I guess, cheered me on. And then teachers, Ms. Cap and Mr. Ryan, my class advisors. I think the best part about Interboro is definitely the people. I think the teachers and the students make this a great place to be at.
My name is Farhanas Askara, I went to Norwood School. During my time at Interboro, I got involved in student council, class congress, PBIS, Bucks Game Day Crew, volleyball, track and lacrosse, and I worked at the airport. Next year, I plan to attend Drexel University, majoring in health sciences. Some of the positives about Interboro are definitely the communities and how everyone wants you to be a better version of yourself. One of my favorite memories here at Interboro was the homecoming court parade this year, and another great memory was volleyball senior rec. I'd like to thank my mom, my friends and my teachers, most importantly.
My name is Gabrielle Haney, I went to Glen Olden Elementary School. Next year, I'm going to Bloomsburg University for nursing. I was involved with the soccer team, winter track, spring track, lacrosse, student council, class congress, Bucks-a-thon, theater and choir. My favorite memory would be just getting involved in sports and stuff like that, and definitely get involved, be kind to everyone, be respectful towards your teachers, and find a good balance between like schoolwork and like social life. Some of the positive things about Interboro are our ability to come together and get things done.
My name is Isabella Tanzi, I went to Glen Olden School. I did field hockey for all four years, lacrosse, and basketball for freshmen and sophomores, and then freshman mentors, Spanish club, Interbio, AP fundraising, bridge tutoring. Next year, I plan to go to Penn State for pharmacology and toxicology. The best things about Interboro are that there's always a teacher you can talk to, whether it's about, just whether it's about school or general life advice. One of my favorite memories at Interboro was getting to play sports and just, and be involved in clubs with my friends. I'd like to thank all of my teachers, they've all helped me in their own ways, so, all of them.
My name is Julian Bulbas, I went to Glen Olden School. At Interboro, I was involved in football, baseball, and freshman mentor in National Honor Society. My plans for next year are to attend Penn State University and major in aerospace engineering. Some of the best things about Interboro are the feeling of community. I felt it during the football season, like mainly, just everyone coming to the games and supporting, it was awesome. One of my favorite memories at Interboro was winning the district championship game this year, and just the football season in general. And another great memory was all the dances, homecoming and prom. I'd like to thank my parents, the rest of my family, my friends, all the teachers here at Interboro that I've had through the years, and all the coaches I've had at Interboro.
My name is Karan Patel, I went to Tinnicum School. While at Interboro, I got involved in high Q, AP fundraising club and chess club, along with many other activities. I've also had an internship for Interboro High School, as well as a job at a local business. Next year, I'll be attending Georgia Institute of Technology, and will be pursuing aerospace engineering. Some of the best things about Interboro are the small class size and the ability to get to know all of the students, as well as the teachers around us, and to get support whenever it's needed. See the help along the way from all the teachers that I've ever had, along with all the support staff, in the form of guidance counselors, principals, and everyone who I can just talk to whenever I needed help, in whether it was in school or even outside of school. I can confidently say that many of the interactions that I've had with teachers and students will stick to me for the rest of my life.
My name is Kaylee Wagner, I went to Tinnicum Elementary School. I was involved with the Interboro varsity cheer team all four years, and also all four years I was involved with class congress. I'm actually secretary this year, and I did theater this year, and I was involved in brace. Next year, I plan to attend West Chester University as a nursing major. Some of the best things about Interboro are how like close knit of community it is, and I just feel like everyone really cares about each other and like supports each other. One of my favorite memories at Interboro was this year's homecoming parade. Me and the rest of class congress got to go and stand on one of the floats, and we won, which was super fun, we're like super cheery, and yeah, it was really a blast. I'd like to thank my family and my friends and my teachers for always being so supportive.
Hello, my name is Michael Northrop. I went to Prospect Park Elementary School and Middle School. I play soccer and lacrosse for the high school. Next year, I plan to study mechanical engineering at Penn State Main Campus. Some positive things about Interboro. Some positive things about inner borough, I think it's just a really like close community, like everybody knows everybody else, and there's just big friend groups where everybody knows each other. Favorite memories in the district probably come from like the football games on Friday nights, my friends helping me, my teachers. The teachers are really supportive, and you can really go to them like for anything.
My name's Sarah Ewing. I went to Glen Olden for elementary school and Prospect Park Middle School. While I was at inner borough, I was involved in cheer, and I also was involved in class congress all four years. Next year, I'm going to be attending nursing school at Delaware County Community College, and I'll be doing their concurrent program with Westchester University to get my bachelor's in two years. I did allied health, which really helped me along my path to decide I wanted to become a nurse, and that also allowed me to do VOTEC and be in the medical careers program, which gave me great shadowing opportunity and made me really realize that the medical field is what I want to do. I really enjoyed class congress because it built my leadership skills and it got me involved in my class and making different decisions, and also was able to make a lot of friends. My favorite memory every year was always doing the float for homecoming, and our senior year float was stitch themed, and it was a lot of fun. I decorated the truck Hawaiian themed, and we played music, and it was really the best memory I have at inner borough. I'd like to thank Mr. Ryan for always being there and helping me with, whether it's advice, but he also grew my confidence and like my leadership skills a lot when it came to class congress and just believing in myself and being able to lead people.
My name is Allison Perillo, and I went to Prospect Park. While at inner borough, I was involved in cheerleading, honor society, Bucks-a-thon, student council, class congress, and freshman mentor. Next year, I plan to attend Newman University this fall to major nursing. It was good getting so involved because I met a lot of new people and some of my lifelong friends. One of my best memories was getting to go to London to perform in the New Year's Day Parade through Cheerleading Day. It was meaningful because it was a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for me. Another great memory is all like all of the dances and being on homecoming court. I'd like to thank my mom for getting me here because she supported me in everything that I've done and believed in me, even if I didn't believe in myself at times.
My name's Nicole Franz. I went to Glen Olden School for my elementary and middle school years. I was involved in class congress and environment mentors at my time in inner borough. I plan on attending St. Joseph's University to major in exercise physiology on the DPT track. My favorite memory at inner borough would have to be working the snack bar with my friends to fundraise for class congress this year. I also got to work with Ms. Capp and Mr. Ryan every week, which was very fun, and I made a lot of memories. Out of all the teachers here, all the teachers are great, but I especially want to thank Ms. Capp and Mr. Ryan for building my confidence in class congress and always reminding me that I could be a leader in any situation.
My name is Riley Burkhimer, and I went to Norwood School. Next year, I plan on attending St. Joseph's University to major in business intelligence and analytics. I've always had an interest in the business field, and business intelligence and analytics is a STEM career, and that's what I've always been inclined to, so using math skills to solve complex business problems. While I was at inner borough, I was involved in class congress, national honor society, freshman mentors, and cheerleading, and I have also served on the executive board for Bucks-a-thon, and I'm the current student council secretary. One of my favorite parts about helping coordinate Bucks-a-thon was that the money that we raised went directly to the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, and it made a lot of our work more meaningful because it went straight to the patients. Some of my favorite memories were actually made during my senior year, from cheering at football games to dances to being able to travel to London to cheer in the New Year's Day Parade to coordinating Bucks-a-thon. I made a lot of my most favorite memories this year. Over the last four years, many teachers and staff members have helped me get where I am today, but most importantly, I'd have to say that my friends and family have always been my biggest supporters. One positive aspect about inner borough is that there are many opportunities to become involved, and I really like that it's such a close-knit community.
My name is Kimberly Winn, and I went to Glen Olden School. While at inner borough, I got involved in AP fundraising, inner bio club, bridge tutoring, and many more, oh, HIQ. Outside of inner borough, I also did a medical program for Thomas Jefferson University, researched oncologic biotherapy, and created a website for it, and I was a founder of the Emergency Aid Foundation of Pennsylvania. Next year, I plan to major in either molecular, cellular, and developmental biology, or neuroscience on the pre-med track, and minoring in global affairs. One of my favorite memories was Bulldog Days. Even though my classmates and teachers weren't physically with me, I still felt their support, and I wouldn't have made it there without them. My advice for future students is to never lower your standards. They're there for a reason. I'd like to thank Mr. Mec for AP fundraising. I'd like to thank Ms. Werner for bio club, Ms. McGee for listening to my rants and helping me with college, and Mr. Soroka for chilling me the freak out.
Okay, let's move on to public comment. Mr. Evans, do you have?
No, sir.
Okay. Move on to motion number five.
Motion 5.1, bond minutes, regular meeting at inner borough, board school directors now live 1923.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Next up, Ms. Meade, for association. Okay, next up, Mr. Evans, next motion.
From the office of finance, motion 7.1, treasurer's report for month ending April 30th, 2023, be approved.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next motion.
Motion 7.2, the fund disbursements, the amount of $5,251,528.95, be approved.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next motion, sir.
Motion 7.3, the budget transfers for 2022, 2023, be approved.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all aye, opposed, in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Mr. Evans, do you have any correspondence?
No, sir.
Committee reports, first up is finance. Share the report. The finance committee meeting was held on May 1st, 2023. We discussed the general fund budget, which there is a proposed final budget on the agenda tonight. Basically, at a 2.35% tax increase, we are at a $39,000 deficit. As it is a proposed final, we still have another finance meeting next month with the final budget on the June meeting. The next meeting will be held June 5th, 2023, and that is it. Next up, we have Mr. Willis, for legislative.
The legislative committee met on 5/10/23 at 7:45 a.m. We were in preparation for the election that happened yesterday, so we didn't cover a lot of new information. One thing, the election yesterday had a boy did win the, filled the position for Mike Stable. We have upcoming, the House session is May 22nd through the 24th, June 5th through the 7th, 12 through the 14th, 28 through the 22nd, 26 through the 30th. The Senate, May through the 10th, June 5th through 7th, 19 through 23, and 26 through the 30th. We covered some bills, just the update bills I had spoken about the month before. We had a bill passed to ease teacher shortage, that's House Bill 141, that was passed to Grow Our Own Educators Act. The table establishes the Grow Our Own Educators Program to provide financial assistance, including pathways for educators as provided in the legislation to help support high need schools in geographic areas that have hard-time finding staff. Also, along with that, very similar, House Bill 100, Fringman Arndt, he's a Democrat, it's a tutoring program, and ends the public school code in terms of courses and studying to provide tutoring programs, and that was passed, third and final passage on May 2nd. House Bill 301, removing derogatory terms from the school code, was passed on April 26th, and rental control of student exposure to sexually explicit content in schools was introduced and referred to the Senate Education Committee on April 20th. The next legislative meeting meets June 14th at 7:45 a.m., and everyone who's remembered the legislative is on track.
All right, Mr. Goldberg is not here, so he did not have anything for the Delaware County Community College. Next up is the Delaware County Intermediate Union. Next, we'll off to our resident comedian, Ms. Harris.
Where's my own? Thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome. The Delaware County Intermediate Union Board of Directors met on May 3rd, 2023. We approved a contract with the QBSLLC for the DCIU, don't ask me what this is, I know I did, to host a safe and training and trainer training exclusive for Delaware County schools. Approved, the DCI approved Chi-Chesher School District for Mind Movement Development. Approved contract with William Penn School District for Human Resources Administrator Support. Approved contract with Wallford Swatmore School District for Business Offices and Liberal Administration Support. Approved contract with the Philadelphia School Districts for the DCI to provide special education and related services for student services. Approved, June 1st, 2023, submission of the Early Head Start Childcare Partnership Contribution Grant, Continuation Grant for the period of September 1st, 2023, to August 31st, 2024. The next school, the next board director meeting would be Wednesday, June 7th, at 6:45 with the DCIU. That is all.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Next up is your room, next motion.
From the office of personnel, motion to the bond personnel actions be approved, 10.1 to 10.7 on page 6.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion with regret that the bond retirements be approved. 11.1, Norman Kraus, a council receivable tax specialist at the administration building with 28 years of service to the district, be approved for retirement effective October 1st, 2023. 11.2, Kimberly Roller, health office assistant at Norman School with 28 years of service to the district, be approved for retirement effective June 14th, 2023. 11.3, Teresa Stewart, health office secretary at the high school with 19 years of service to the district, be approved for retirement effective June 21st, 2023. And 11.4, Siobhan Campion, instructional assistant at kindergarten and early learning department with 18 years of service to the district, be approved for retirement effective June 14th, 2023.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Just real quick, adding that up, that's 93 years of experience that we're losing between those four employees. So I just want to congratulate them on their retirement. I want to thank them for their service, and it's hard to fill some of these shoes, definitely going into education, the education field, it's going to be a tough act to hire people to replace these. So I want to thank them for their years of service. Okay, hearing no further comments, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the office of procurement and instruction, motion that the bond items be approved, 12.1 to 12.15 on page 8.
Second. Oh, I don't second.
That's his job normally, but I'm filling in. So let me just say that. Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the office of special education pupil services, motion that the bond items be approved, 13.1 to 13.12 on page 10.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the office of technology, motion that the bond items be approved, 14.1 to 14.4.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Just real quick for the public, number 14.4, I just want to highlight that is a large dollar amount. However, you know, as we go through our budget presentations, that amount is allocated in the budget that we are going to be passing. So that is for, to support the laptops throughout the district and the teacher laptops, okay? Hearing no other comments, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the office of finance, motion that the bond items be approved, 15.1 to 15.5 on page 11.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
From Capitol Improvement Committee, motion that the bond items be approved, 16.1 and 16.2.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 17, that the board school directors authorize the district to enter into an attorney-client fee contract with the France Law Group, ALPC, at 402 West Broadway, Suite 860, San Diego, California, and Dylan McCandless, King Colter, and Graham, LOP, at 1.8 West Cunningham Street in Butler, PA, and Raphael Pupio for the commencement of legal action against social media companies, Meta, TikTok, YouTube, et cetera. Said actions shall be for the purpose of paying money damage. The attorney-client fee contracts shall provide for a contingent fee of 25% of any recovery. Expenses to fund litigation shall be advanced by France Law Group, APLC, and deducted from any recovery. The district shall not be responsible for any fee or cost reimbursement in the event there is no recovery in the action.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Just a quick comment about this motion that hopefully we pass and second. We all know that, you know, social media is playing a major impact on our children. So the concept of this is that there's a lot of mental health tolls that are taking place on our children. So, you know, joining this class action lawsuit, there's potential compensation on what it is costing us to help our kids in schools, mental health supports, you know, social work, all the aspects of the mental health that is causing, is being caused from the social media companies, and how the algorithms that they're targeting, they can be specifically targeting children. So joining this class action lawsuit puts the district at no monetary, there's no monetary stake in it, we just have the opportunity to recoup some money that could potentially go back to mental health for our children. So, Ms. Meade, is there anything you would like to add to that? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 18, that the board school directors to approve the memorandum of understanding between the local police departments from Glen Olden, Norwood, Prospect Park, and Tinnicum Townsend for school years 2023 to 2024 and 2024, 25. The purpose of this MOU is to establish procedures to be followed when certain specific incidents occur on school property at any school-sponsored activity or on any public conveyance providing transportation to or from a school or school-sponsored activity, including but not limited to a school bus.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the board? Just real quick, this is every two years we pass an MOU with the police, they also have to approve it as well. This is just, you know, for the state continuing work. This is just, you know, for the state of Pennsylvania, we are required to do this. But it also is just sharing the responsibility for these actions. So if there are no further questions, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries five zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 19, is a roll call motion that the board of school directors adopt the proposed final general fund budget for fiscal year July 1st, 2023, to June 30th, 2024, with proposed expenditures of $83,833, requiring an increase of .5895 bills over the current billage rate, resulting in a tax increase of 2.35% for a new total billage rate of 25.6739 bills.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the board? Just real quick about this motion, as I mentioned in my finance report, this is a proposed final. We saw, this is not officially passing a 2.35 tax increase. Next month is when we would pass the final budget. The 2.35%, just for the public, at this stage of the game, it is the second lowest in the county for other school districts, and there is still work to be done to try to get that lower. So this is just a proposed final. This is not a vote on a tax increase. Okay, Ms. Caldwell, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Willis?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Fagan? Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Shaver?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 20, the election of treasurer to serve for the period from July 1st, 2023 until June 30th, 2024, as per Section 404 of the Pennsylvania School Code.
At this point, I would like to call for nominations for treasurer.
Mr. Shaver?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Daniel Fagan, Daniel Fagan.
Are there any other nominations? Can I have a motion to close nominations?
Motion to close.
Second. Okay, hearing there's only one nominee, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries five zero. Ms. Fagan is our current treasurer, so she's going to continue in that role. Okay, is there any old business before the board? Any new business? Okay, Ms. Rada, pass it on off to you.
Thanks. Just a few very brief items. First, I would just like to thank the students and the art staff, teachers here at the high school for the beautiful artwork that is on display here tonight at the high school. For any parents who may be in the building over the next couple of days, and we had a lot of families here tonight, please take a moment to check it out because it really is amazing at the talent we have here at Innerboro High School. Also, just asking parents to please check the website and the calendars for all of the upcoming events. Now that we're coming to the end of the year, there's a lot of things happening within the building. We want you to stay informed. We want you to participate, and all of that information is on the website and also in the smores and communication that's coming out from the schools. Also, just a reminder that June 2nd is now a day off for staff and students, and we'll make sure we keep reminding families so they are prepared for that. And that's really all I have for the evening. Thank you.
Are there any comments from board members? Okay, just, this is our last board meeting before graduation, so I want to congratulate all of our seniors, all of the families who have worked hard for the last 12, 13 years getting their children here. So it's an exciting time. Tonight was a long night, but it also is one of the best nights of the school year. So congratulations to all those who were recognized. Okay, hearing nothing else, please visit the Innerboro School District website at www.innerborsd.org for further information on the meetings listed below. On Monday, June 5th, 2023, a finance committee meeting with the GBO meeting immediately following will be held virtually at 7:00 p.m. The next work session of the Innerboro Board of School Directors will be held virtually on Monday, June 19th, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. The next regularly monthly meeting of the Innerboro Board of School Directors will be held at the Administration Building on Wednesday, June 21st, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. Meetings adjourned.